Welcome, everybody. As typical, we will start out tonight's meeting with an opportunity for any public member to openly address counsel. So if there's anybody here that would like to address counsel, not in any item that's specifically on the agenda, now's your opportunity. Harold?
Hi.
No? Okay. With that said, I'm calling a July 16th City Council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Oh, my goodness. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Hammerick absent. Councilmember Haques?
Here.
Councilmember Meisner?
Here.
Councilmember Smith absent. Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Cochran?
Here.
Invocation?
We do not...oh, we do. There we go.
Okay, we're gonna have an invocation.
Thank you so much for the city of Canyon City, and, Lord, we invite you into the planning. Lord, we thank you so much for all who serve in our community, and, Lord, we pray that you'd raise up more people that care about the betterment of our community. God, thank you for all those who have gone before us, and we just commit this time to you. Help us, Lord, give us wisdom, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Join me in the pleasure legion.
(inaudible)
Do we have any citizens that have signed up to speak on any issues that are on the agenda tonight?
I have no request to speak at this time.
And keep in mind that we have two public hearings, so if you have an interest in speaking during either of those public hearings, you need to complete a form. If you have an interest in doing that, go ahead and get that completed now, and we'll get it up to Jerry and get you squared away. Any council member announcements? Ms. Gonzalez?
I just wanted to recognize Kristy Gotham, our...what is she?
Public Information Officer?
Yeah, Public Information Officer. On Facebook, she had encountered some pretty aggressive folks, and she handled it very well. I just wanted to commend her on her professionalism and her...and the way she handled it.
Anybody else? Keep in mind that our normal general government meeting that would be typically scheduled for this Wednesday is not going to happen. And then I would like for everybody to just take a minute...I'm not sure how many are aware of this, but probably you are, that a standout in our community passed away this weekend, Mr. Hank Holloway. So I'd like everybody to take just a couple of minutes and just give some thoughts and prayers to Hank and his family. Thank you. So we have a couple of recognitions and proclamations. First, we would like to recognize some members of the Canyon City Police Department, Colorado Springs Police Department, City of Fountain, and the Fremont County Sheriff's Office. And I would ask our Chief Harvey to take this whole process over, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem and members of council. Thank you for being here, members of the audience, to help us celebrate a major accomplishment by our Canyon City police officers. And just give you an insight on what we respond to on a daily basis and are prepared to respond to. On June 25th at 7:47 a.m., dispatch received a call from a frantic woman claiming that an individual with a gun whom she knew as a boyfriend had shown up at her house and was making threats towards her. While officers were responding to the scene, the individual actually barricaded himself inside of a residence with a gun after making these threats. While en route to...before we were actually able to arrive on scene, another call came in that the individual had actually exited the residence and was fighting with an individual out in the parking lot, also still with a gun. So at this point in time, our officer was responding to an individual who clearly had a reckless disregard for the safety of other people and was armed with a handgun. It doesn't take any great imagination there that not only is there a significant danger to the individuals that were involved, but also to the officers who were responding to a man who clearly had a gun and wasn't afraid to use it. So the officers actually showed up at 3308 North Fifth Street, the apartment complex there, and immediately tried to identify the circumstances, find this individual, and protect the public. The officers who responded, and in no particular order, Sergeant Andrew Sanders, Officer John Dickens, Officer Bryce Bodycomb, Officer Ryan Building, Officer Shelby Beck, Officer Robin Vidmar, Detective Athena Garcia, and Officer Nick Mall with the Canyon City Police Department; with the Fremont County Sheriff's Office, Deputy Jeremy Amendola, Captain John Rankin, and additional members of the Fremont County Sheriff's Office SWAT team, Mackenzie Rokemore, Alejandro Jimenez, Daniel Calhoun, Gerg Owen, Dustin Maz; and with the Florence Police Department, Sergeant Patrick Slattery, as a member of the SWAT team, responded to help contain and control this individual, but at that point, he had actually barricaded himself back inside of the residence. Barricaded gunman is a very tricky circumstance for law enforcement. We don't want to push the issue too quickly. We don't want to cause an armed confrontation, and so it takes considerable restraint. Law enforcement officers want to protect, and they want to obviously catch individuals who are trying to harm the public. The officers who responded on that particular day showed professionalism in their response. They followed best practices as it relates to containment and turned a situation that could have been very tragic for our community in a short period of time, were able to get that situation contained and have the individual actually contained inside of the residence, where the only individual that he could actually harm was himself at that point. Instead of rushing in or forcing a confrontation, the officers actually set up a perimeter, set up a incident command post on the exterior of the apartment complex, began evacuations of area residents in case there was some sort of altercation, so that the residents in the apartment complex there were safe. All of the folks that I mentioned to you were present that day and were integral in actually resolving this situation. But I also want to recognize a few individuals who, as a result of their direct efforts, were able to help us resolve this successfully, to where the suspect was apprehended, unharmed, to where no other individuals were threatened by him or actually injured by him, and no gunshots were fired. And that shows considerable restraint with an individual that's as reckless as this individual was. And most importantly, none of our officers were hurt. They stayed safe, they used cover, they communicated well with each other, and communicated with resources outside of their own individual agency and units. We had some additional folks that showed up to help us actually resolve that. So I believe that his title is Officer Eric Moore from the Fountain Police Department, and Officer Chris Chinnewith with the Colorado Springs Police Department, were requested to be able to help respond and bring technical equipment that could essentially capture video equipment, capture video inside of the actual apartment there, and make sure that, number one, the suspect was still contained in there, and, number two, establish communications with him, which we had already started with Officer John Dickens and Officer Robin Vidmar. The Fremont County Office of Emergency Management Director, Jill Filer, responded as well to help coordinate evacuations and to actually provide a shelter. The shelter was established at Canyon Exploratory School right around the corner, and so these folks that were displaced had not only a warm place to stay, she helped coordinate additional responses from medical personnel that showed up, from the American Medical Response, as well as the Canyon City Fire District that showed up to help should there be any actual injuries. So the folks I'd like to recognize, now that I've recognized those organizations as well, were people who stepped outside of their normal duties, outside of their role, performed above and beyond, or with extremely meritorious service, to help resolve this situation to the successful conclusion that it was. And ultimately, the individual, who I will not name, was taken into custody and charged with several felony counts, to include felony menacing with a weapon. There was also a domestic violence situation that was going on there. But again, that's not the important part. The important part here is the job that the officers did in protecting the city of Canyon City and its residents. So I'd like to actually call up, and I'll talk a little bit about what each person did. First, Sergeant Andrew Sanders, if you would come forward. So Sergeant Sanders was the first supervisor that was on scene. It's often difficult as a supervisor not to rush in and become one of the officers, but to stand back with restraint and actually coordinate the response from not only multiple officers inside the Canyon City Police Department, but also other responding organizations and other law enforcement organizations to make sure that people are put in places where they can be successful, where they're safe, and to organize the entire situation. His direct involvement was one of the reasons why we were able to have a successful resolution with this. His clear-mindedness in the presence of such an extreme circumstance allowed us to organize our response and contain this individual quickly. He stayed on throughout the entire situation, making sure that personnel were not only relieved, but safe. He coordinated the evacuations and other responding personnel in the exterior perimeter. Sergeant Andrew Sanders is to be commended for the leadership and restraint that he showed that day in the successful resolution. So if you would, hold your applause until I've gone through all individuals being recognized. So Officer John Dickens, also please come forward. Officer Dickens was one of the first individuals who actually responded to the scene, and instead of, again, getting sucked into the situation, he started also coordinating other officers who were responding and tried to start initial negotiations with the suspect. He developed a rapport and actually led to other subsequent negotiations with our hostage negotiator, Officer Robin Vidmar. And his quick thinking and response to setting up the rapport with this individual was actually what led to, again, the successful resolution of this situation. Officer Robin Vidmar, please come forward. Officer Robin Vidmar is one of our highly-trained hostage negotiators. So we actually pride ourselves on having Level III certified hostage negotiators, which is the highest level of certification that you can attain. We have a couple other negotiators that actually responded to the scene as well, but Officer Robin Vidmar was the point of the spear, if you will, for actually negotiating with this individual and making sure that we didn't have anybody else inside and that we knew exactly where he was. She continued the negotiations, even talking to family, to try and find additional information about this young man, in an effort to try and talk him out. Officer Pete Elliott, please come forward. Officer Elliott was also one of the initial responders who showed up on scene. He was also the reporting officer who documented and spoke with witnesses for the successful conclusion, and eventually was the basis for the search warrant and arrest warrants that were obtained for the subject involved in this. And his level of commitment was such that he remained on scene, actually having to be ordered to go home, because had he stayed for four more hours, would have been up for a 24-hour period as this standoff proceeded. Unfortunately, Officer Eric Moore and Officer Chris Chinnewith were not able to be with us tonight. Emergency Manager Jill Filer, please come forward. So is it manager or director?
Either one of us.
Okay. So manager Filer, or director Filer, whichever you choose, heard about the incident and immediately came out to help coordinate the response between multiple agencies. She helped us set up the impromptu command post that actually was taking shape inside of the Canyon City Exploratory School, and got us not only maps that we needed of aerial coverage of the apartment complex so we could plan our response, but also helped coordinate and get the Red Cross mobilized so that we could have staff present for the evacuees who were actually at the Canyon City Exploratory School. Is it Medic Amelia Knox? EMT Amelia Knox, please come forward. So Ms. Knox responded as part of the ambulance that was brought there to stand by in case someone was injured. What was notable about Mrs. Knox's contribution is that, again, she went outside of her normal role to help us resolve this situation. Being a scribe is not a glamorous job, but it is an extremely important one. So everything that happens on scene, everything, every communication, every decision that's made, points of entry, all those things have to be captured later for court purposes. The officers who had responded to the scene were either on perimeter or directly involved with negotiating the surrender of this individual or coordinating the response. Ms. Knox saw that as an opportunity to help out, and instead of standing by, offered her services to be able to scribe and document the entire situation, as well as the timeframes that those things occurred. And finally, Lieutenant Shane Roberts. So on this particular day, one of the important things that we have to think about with managing this event is getting information out to the public. On that particular day, our internal Public Information Officer at the Police Department and our city PIO were unavailable for this particular incident. Lieutenant Shane Roberts is actually the Public Information Officer for the Canyon City Fire Department, and again, volunteered his services to help coordinate the release of information to the public in that area, as well as to the local media papers. Stepping outside of his role as the supervisor for the Canyon City Fire Department and stepping into the role of a multi-agency joint information person to help keep the public informed not only of developments, but also to release information, to calm them, to let them know that this situation was under control. All of the folks that I mentioned earlier who responded to this should be commended. But these individuals behind me, their direct actions resulted in the successful conclusion of this particular circumstance. Officer Nick Mall, or, yeah, Officer Nick Mall and Detective Athena Garcia, both were involved in obtaining a search warrant that, again, Officer Pete Elliott gave the basis for all of that information. So if you would, please join me in commending, and I have certificates of commendation for all the folks who were there that day, who I just mentioned, their direct contributions contributed to this successful resolution. But everybody should be commended. Please join me in giving a round of applause for their fine work.[1111.01][1111.01](applause) Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, if it's okay with you, I'd like to award these certificates to these officers and other public safety responders, and then get a picture in front of council, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
All right. Sounds good.
(inaudible).
Excuse me.
Bring that boy up there and give him to you, Dad.
Yes.
Oh, the baby.
Yeah.
He's in the Explorer.
That's what kids are for.
You gonna get us?
Okay.
What do you want?
Good job.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
(applause)
And while we move forward to the next item, I think everybody in this room probably realizes that, because I recognize a lot of you folks, but this is what makes our community great in terms of having a law enforcement that is this dedicated to our safety. Thank you. Okay, item C. We would like to recognize a number of city and department, Colorado Department of Transportation employees.
You mean B?
Pardon?
Item B?
It is.
Mine says C, so we're doing C.
Well, B comes before C.
Could be. We're gonna bring up George to help us out with this whole process, and kind of give us a little bit of overview in terms of what was involved. And then we have a certificate for each of these people.
Yes. Thank you, Pro Tem, Meisner, and the council. If recall, last year, the city purchased a new snowplow, sander, liquid de-icer combination unit for our winter maintenance program. We realized that the city, we had no experience in applying liquid de-icer. So our friends over at the state, the CDOT boys, come over and they assisted us on setting up our program, showing us how to work the truck, gave us a lot of information, set up the whole program for us. And so with them, I think we had a pretty successful year of our snow removal and ice removal, based with their help. Even though we had a small snowfall this year, I think it prepared us for next year if we do have a snowfall. Just to let you know, this is not the first time the state has stepped up and helped us, but I think this is a main thing that they should be recognized for stepping up, working with different agencies, local agencies, to approve the community. So I think it's very beneficial they're recognized for this. And I also have one employee, Michael Kroll. He's the one that kind of spearheaded, after we got the truck, he kind of spearheaded learning the system. He worked with the state directly quite a bit, rode with the state boys when they were doing their snow plowing, learned the system. And he was kind of the go-between guy between the state and the city, getting all this worked out. And I think it worked out real well, and we look forward to working for him again.
Thank you. So basically, in a nutshell, the certificates essentially say that we're thanking you for assisting the city of Canyon City, the winter icing, the winter de-icing program implementation in 2017 and 18, thanking you for assisting the city of Canyon City. Your willingness to assist the city exemplifies the cooperation between local agencies and the benefits to the community. So we have Mr. Harold Moore.
Come on up here.
I'll bring these down here in a second. Nick Cooper? I'm gonna try this. Mark Gooch?
These are Orman, and he would like to send his apologies. He had a family emergency.
Mikhail Kroll? Hope I didn't butcher that. John Daniels? And Chuck Decker?
Mr. Decker's up in Denver, working with our computer system. And we'd like to thank our PR representative, Michelle, for showing up. She is one dedicated to showing the cooperation between government agencies.
Harold?
Thank you.
Nick?
Kroll?
Nick, no, Nick.
This one.
What is next?
Michael.
So if you gentlemen would like to come up here, we would like to...
Take the picture.
Take a little photo.
Tell them what's tricky about them.
Thank you, guys.[1408.42][1408.42](applause)
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. We are now looking at item number eight, the adoption of our agenda, our agenda and consent agenda. We would like for our city administrator to review the consent agenda.
Mayor Pro Tem and council, 8A would approve the minutes in the June 27, 2018 special city council meeting and the July 2, 2018 regular city council meeting. 8B would approve a drainage easement agreement for a 410 Valley Road to accommodate drainage malfunctions made by the cities to a street improvement project on Mariposa. 8C would approve an annual software and hardware maintenance agreement to collect and process the Neptune equipment water meter readings with finish line systems at a cost not to exceed $6,617.16. It's a proprietary system. 8D would approve Resolution 8, authorize the city to enter an agreement with Warren and when now Hart to begin the, what is a multi-step process of plating the portion of Outlot B Phase 5 on Dawson Ranch subdivision right off of Tanner Road to convey by the city subject to a maintenance easement, a maintenance easement agreement for a storeboard detention pond that's located in that area, and the duty of the Harts to maintain the storeboard drainage facility located within this Lot B. 8E would receive and file a list of the enclosed bills. Any questions?
Yes, but I'll leave it for discussion. Any corrections or changes? I would like to at least announce a correction to the July 2 council meeting, page four, the roll call vote for the energy, the clean energy collection. They have myself as being, as voting in favor of that proposal. I voted nay, and clerk has that change done already. Any other changes or corrections? Do I hear a motion?
Well, I have a question, actually, about one of the items. On 8B, the Valley Road Agreement?
Yes.
There's a waiver on page two of the document, a waiver of curb and gutter requirements for that parcel, and I wondered why that was here.
If I prefer to add him, unless Cory wants to address it.
I mean, it was a negotiated agreement in exchange for compensation. That was the level of compensation, and Adam can certainly talk about why we thought that was appropriate in terms of the city's requirements and the possibility of applying those requirements to this property.
So one of the primary concerns of this property owner is what he might have for future requirements if he develops the property. Basically, as we went through the negotiations, we felt this was the most benign thing there as far as curb and gutter. There is no other curb and gutter adjacent to the site. It wouldn't preclude...
Yes, but I'll leave it for some discussion. Any corrections or changes? I would like to at least announce a correction to the July 2 council meeting, page four, the roll call vote for the energy, the clean energy collection. They have myself as being, as voting in favor of that proposal. I voted nay, and clerk has that change done already. Any other changes or corrections? Do I hear a motion?
Well, I have a question, actually, about one of the items. On 8B, the Valley Road Agreement?
Yes.
There's a waiver on page two of the document, a waiver of curb and gutter requirements for that parcel. And I wondered why that was here.
If I prefer to add him, unless Corey wants to address it.
I mean, it was a negotiated agreement in exchange for compensation. That was the level of compensation. And Adam can certainly talk about why we thought that was appropriate in terms of the city's requirements and the possibility of applying those requirements to this property.
So, one of the primary concerns of this property owner is what he might have for future requirements if he develops the property. Basically, as we went through the negotiations, we felt this was the most benign thing there as far as curb and gutter. There is no other curb and gutter adjacent to the site. It wouldn't preclude, you know, a future improvements agreement at some other point if they agreed to that. But basically, we're saying right now that we're not going to go in and force him to install curb and gutter if at this time he developed, he submitted a development application.
I thought there was curb and gutter on the adjacent lot, which is why I raised the question, because I thought if we have curb and sidewalk on the adjacent property...
This is a little further west of where you might be thinking there on Empire Road. Yeah, there's at least one property between this property and the area that's already developed.
Okay. So there is no adjacent property that currently has curb and gutter?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So it's, it's his property and we're getting easement?
Correct.
For stormwater purposes?
Correct.
All right. Any other questions?
No.
A motion? Ms. Gonzalez?
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, consent agenda.
And the agenda? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I have a question on something here. Item 8D. And Adam can maybe probably help us, but as I understand it, the current situation is that the homeowners have a license? Is that right?
Correct. The property owner bought the property with an existing encroachment that they were unaware of. Once they were made aware of it, we offered them a license agreement for the encroachment. Since that time, well, actually, at that time, they offered just to purchase, purchase the property to eliminate the encroachment. At the time, we weren't sure, we had not investigated enough to know whether we wanted to recommend that, and so we just offered them a license agreement. And they've been since then offering to purchase the property this time. Staff has looked at it. The portion of the outlot that they want to purchase actually is up above, far above the actual stormwater facility. And other than maybe future access for maintenance, it's not serving any purpose as far as the operation of that stormwater facility. It makes sense, like I said, they're already using the property, they're encroached upon it, and they would just like to own it. It would make them feel better. Again, they're maintaining it, they're taking care of it, they have improvements on it. And so it made sense to us to go ahead and make that transfer. Of course, we're protecting the city in the future with the easement agreement that'll happen. So tonight, what you're approving is an agreement to move forward with the subdivision plat development and conveyance for the amount that they proposed. We'll come, the applicant or the property owner will prepare the subdivision plat. It's a exemption plat, so it'll be approved at a staff level. We'll bring, once that's approved and done, we'll bring back an ordinance for you for the actual conveyance.
So my question, you and I've talked about some encroachment things, and I'm slightly educated. How do we, in two years from now, differentiate this situation with John Doe in two years saying, "Well, you let this guy buy the property." How do we...
Every single one of these situations is different. We have, we've transferred entire outlots up in Dawson Ranch. We've gained outlots from other people. It really just, and that's specific to Dawson Ranch, but all over the city, just like when we do a vacation of a street, some streets it makes sense to vacate, some it doesn't. And so it's a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
I do have one question.
Ms. Gonzalez?
And it's just, it's just simply, what is the approximate cost to do the survey, the subdivision exemption plat?
It may be a few thousand dollars to do that. They're going to have to hire a surveyor. It's a drawing exercise, all on paper, but they do have to hire a licensed surveyor to do the work. They'll have to do title work, they'll have some of those expenses. We won't charge them an application fee likely. We haven't really talked about that internally, but since, usually when we're involved as a co-applicant or as an applicant, we don't charge those fees. So really, the cost of them to hire that professional to do the survey.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other discussion? May we have a roll call?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Nay.
Okay, that moves us to item number nine, public hearing. Can you, you're going to start by reading the title?
Item number nine is a public hearing to consider Grading Homes Minor Subdivision, 525 Grading Avenue.
I'm now going to open the public hearing, and we'll have a staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. This evening, we are here to consider the request for a minor subdivision for Grading Homes Minor Subdivision located at 525 Grading Avenue. The subject property is a vacant two-acre parcel located north of Cherry Street between Grading Avenue and Delray Avenue in East Canyon. It is zoned R2, medium-density residential, and is surrounded by existing single-family residential lots. It appears to be a remnant parcel left over as the lots to the north and south in this block were carved off for single-family residential use. It has not previously been the subject of a development proposal. The parcel has a relatively level grade and has a designation with the Fremont County Assessor as pasture land. It does contain frontage on both Grading Avenue and Delray Avenue. And finally, it should be noted that the R2 zoning is not unique to the subject parcel. All of the lots on this block, as well as the full blocks to the east, west, south, and north, all have the same R2 zoning classification with lot sizes which tend, in most cases, to exceed the minimum lot area requirement under the R2 zone of 6,000 square feet. The applicant is proposing to subdivide this parcel into five lots. Lot one, the largest of the five lots, would be 21,845 square feet and will access Delray Avenue. Lots two through five, each at 16,343 square feet, will all access Grading Avenue. Lots taking, the lots taking access from Grading Avenue will have to address the ditch for crossing for driveway issues, as this tends, and this will be something that is addressed as part of the building construction permit review process. In order to qualify as a minor subdivision, the City of Canyon City's regulations, the proposed subdivision must meet all of the following criteria. First, the subject parcel to the subdivision request cannot be more than 10 acres in area. Second, the resulting subdivision will create five or fewer lots. Third, all resulting lots will meet both minimum lot area and minimum lot width along their street frontage. In this case, under the R2 zone, that's a minimum of 6,000 square feet and a minimum of 60 feet in width measured at the street edge. All lots must access a public right-of-way, and it cannot be a right-of-way being created with this subdivision. In other words, it must be an existing right-of-way. And all lots must be served with utilities, including water, sanitary sewer, electricity, and natural gas. Staff finds that the proposed Grading Homes Minor Subdivision meets all of these criteria. Staff also finds that the proposed subdivision and single-family use will be consistent with the historic pattern of development in this neighborhood. The existing lots surrounding this parcel are above the minimum lot size for the R2 zone, and these neighborhoods have been in place for decades. The Grading Homes subdivision will finish off this block in a manner that respects the historic pattern of development for this area. Now, Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this request on June 27, and Planning Commission cited findings of fact that adequate public notice was provided, such as the City of Canyon City had the proper jurisdiction to conduct a public hearing on this matter. During their deliberations on this request, the Planning Commission agreed with the applicant's position that the imposition of the full cost of a new fire hydrant to serve all of the homes along Delray Avenue was an unfair burden to place at the sole lot on Delray upon which the applicant would build. In other words, there are some 30 to 40 lots that would benefit from the installation of that, and the applicant was being asked to bear the full cost of that burden. Planning Commission voted unanimously to strike that condition of approval, and the conditions of approval that you have before you in your agenda this evening are what remain after their modifications. Now, in terms of the minor subdivision request, staff recommends that council conduct a public hearing on the Grading Homes Minor Subdivision request, and staff and the Planning Commission also recommend that city council approve the Grading Homes Minor Subdivision request, subject to the one condition in the staff report as modified by Planning Commission. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions council may have. Present to speak on behalf of the project are the applicants, Mr. John Karochi and Mr. Brady, Bernie Braddy.
Questions from council?
So I, I know you, you removed the fact that they would have to bear the full cost of the fire hydrant. Is the fire hydrant still going in?
That will be the subject of a negotiation between the applicant and the fire district. The city will not get involved in that negotiation. To the extent that the fire district agrees that, or believes that that fire hydrant should go in, we believe that there'll be a negotiation between the applicant and the fire district as to what a fair share cost for their part of that participation would be.
Okay.
Okay, if there is a cost to that, who, will it be just between the applicant and the fire district, and the city won't be involved in that?
The city will not be involved in that, that's correct.
Ms. Gonzalez?
I have a question to follow up from that, and I have it for you guys right there. Thanks for being here. If, if the, the full cost is required by the police department for the fire hydrant, would that shut this project down?
If the full cost was required by, well, I guess to back up a little bit to what we had agreed to and what we presented to the Planning Commission was that, you know, we're not against a fire hydrant being there, obviously, but we just feel that we shouldn't have the whole cost. That was not a cost that was figured in when you make an offer on a piece of property and you figure out what you can sell a house for. Obviously, if through some negotiation with the Fire Protection District, we are required to do that before we can build on that lot, then we will probably take a hard look at whether we build on that particular lot. Because that's a, you're looking at a cost of somewhere in the neighborhood of $12,000, and it's kind of been our understanding that that's a lot of what the impact fees that go to the Fire Protection District should help pay for some of that, as well as, I mean, if you have 35, 40 homes that benefit from having a fire hydrant there, maybe we should get the calculator out and divide it up by several homes. So that, I guess that was our position, just so you understand what we presented.
Sure, I can understand. Thank you.
And based, based on the statement that he's making, okay, if something happened, if we approve this plot with the understanding that there's going to be negotiations between them and the fire district, and things go wrong, and just what he said, then they may decide to back away. Where are we at with regards to approving the subdivision down the roadway in a sense that's really not, not going to serve any purpose?
It won't have any bearing on the processing of this subdivision request. We can move forward with getting the plat recorded, it will create the lots. What would likely be a consequence if the applicant and the fire district were at loggerheads over what to do with this fire hydrant, that lot that faces Delray Avenue would probably remain unbuilt until that discussion got resolved.
Okay, well, I said, I just don't want to approve something that down the roadway can create a complication with regards to, we approve something, and then all of a sudden, part of the approval isn't going to get done because they don't want to do, and I understand why you wouldn't want to do that. They don't want to do with regards to the negotiation coming out, where it's a reasonable negotiation, that's, that's my only concern.
Well, we fully plan to build on the other four lots that front on Grading. We know, in fact, we have begun the process of advertising those and have one pre-sold already. But it's all, it's always economics, and it means that if, and we want to build on that lot, there's obvious that we want to, we want to build something. And if it means that we end up having to pay a higher price to put a big chunk of that hydrant in, then I guess we'll have to, we'll have to deal with that. But ultimately, the problem with something like this is you have people paying in to help take care of issues like this, like a new fire hydrant in an area that hasn't had one forever, and you've had those homes there for years and years. And we would just like some help if we end up having to pay part of it. We'd like some help from somebody else. That's, we don't want to pass everything on to the consumer. I guess that's what I'm saying. Any other discussion?
I just want to say one more thing. I'm excited to see these go up. Excited to see building in the city.
Well, we, you know, buildings slowed down inside the city limits for a long time, and I think the city is much more cooperative now with contractors and everything, and I know this doesn't have anything to do with the city versus us, but when we met with Fire Protection District, we were told, you know, it was more, maybe more responsibility should come from the city. And obviously, the city provides the water. But when I met with the city, with Patrick and with Adam Lancaster, then it's like, well, so you have this situation where there's not really a clear policy on who should be doing what. And I think it points to a problem, maybe that has been in negotiation for a long time, and maybe it's time for another meeting so that when this, next time somebody puts in a request for something that you have a clear policy that says, "This is how we're going to address this," between the Fire Protection District and the developer and the City of Canyon City.
Good, thank you. And you chose a beautiful area of town. I love that area.
Before you leave, gentlemen, can you just give us your name and address, please?
John Karochi, 1317 Field Avenue, Canyon City, Colorado.
Bernie Braddy, 1385 Lowry Ranch Road, Canyon City, Colorado. And I would like to just say one thing. Through this whole situation, Mr. Patrick here has been a very, a big asset to us, and he's an outstanding employee for the City of Canyon. I've done some other things in the past, and I'm just really, really grateful to say that this man is a very good asset for Canyon City, Colorado.
And I got one last question.
Go ahead, Frank.
On the here where it says, "City of Canyon City, Engineer Department, applicant has not provided Schedule B title work and has not adequately answered the question as to whether ditch easements are required." Has that been taken care of, or is that still the same way?
We took care of that this morning. The applicant brought in the Schedule B title work, we went and pulled the records as to what was recorded at certain reception numbers. And this is as it pertained primarily to the ditch frontage on Grading. It turns out that that ditch is primarily for irrigation tail runoff, and since they're taking this out of production as pasture land, and it'll be single-family homes, and since they're also dedicating boundary easements on each of the lot, both Adam and I agreed that that was pretty much a moot point at that, at that point.
Okay, thank you.
We do need to provide, we'll have pipe and so forth for that ditch, because without curb and gutter, you also have runoff from the streets and, and so forth. So we will make sure, we're not going to just fill the ditch in and it won't be there.
And the only reason I bring it up is because we have such, you know, controversy with ditches and stuff like that. So as long as it's been taken care of, that's fine.
It was a little item that I missed in the title work that we, that was brought to my attention, thanks to Mr. Meisner bringing it to the attention of Mr. Patrick's already. So anyway, I appreciate the fact that, you know, but I did, I missed that, and when I got the information today, met with Manny Cole, and we've got everything...
As long as it's taken care of, that's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. We have no requests for the public, so I'll close the public hearing. And we need a motion from council.
A move that we approve item nine of the agenda, the Grading Homes Minor Subdivision.
Second. Any discussion?
I would just like to clarify that we talk about the planning condition, that the Planning Commission's recommendation, is that, that's really not an issue anymore, is that not correct? Because the, the, the fire, I mean, the fire hydrant is no longer an issue, and the title work and ditch stuff is taken care of. So none of those issues are...
Irrelevant. See, no other discussion, let's do a vote, a roll call.
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamburg, absent. Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
thanks to Mr. Meisner bringing it to the attention of Mr. Patrick's mulready. So anyway, I appreciate the fact that, you know, but I did, I missed that, and when I got the information today, I met with Manny Cole, and we've got everything.
As long as it's taken care of, that's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. We have no request for the public, so I'll close the public hearing. And we need a motion from council.
A move that we approve item nine of the agenda, the Gredeen Homes Minor Subdivision.
Second. Any discussion?
I would just like to clarify that we talk about the Planning Commission's recommendation. Is that, that's really not an issue anymore, is that not correct? Because the fire, I mean, the fire hydrant is no longer an issue, and the title work and ditch stuff is taken care of. So none of those issues are irrelevant.
No. It's coming back.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion, let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack absent. Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith absent. Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks, Patrick.
Good luck.
Good job, Patrick.
Thank you.
We will move to item number 10.
Which public hearing for the application of a brew hub liquor license for the World's End Brewing Company Limited liability, Thomas J. Martinez applicant, location is 401 Main Street. We will open public hearing.
Mr. Meisner?
And we'll have a staff report.
Before we begin, I need to make it public notice that I need to recuse myself from this discussion and the vote, because I signed the petition for the liquor license. So I will be exiting the room.
Do we just need to acknowledge that, Corrie, and move forward?
Yeah, you don't need to do anything. She made the representation on the record.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
We'll put on timeout.
Okay. Ma'am, you have the table.
Thank you, Mayor Protam and members of the city council. Mr. Thomas Martinez has applied for a new brew pub liquor license concurrently with both the City of Canyon City and the state liquor license, so that everything will come together as close as we can possibly help that happen. The applicant has provided everything that is required. All of that is in your packet. One of the requirements is that they attend scheduled training. That training is, we're working with the state now, should be in August after the new city clerk is on board. So with that, the applicant is in the audience and available to answer any questions you might have about the actual license application.
Welcome, Mr. Martinez. Can you give us your name and address, please?
Yes, Thomas Martinez, 1136 Pennsylvania Avenue, Canyon City, Colorado.
Comments or questions from staff?
I'll start. Are you familiar with the Colorado liquor code?
Yes, ma'am. I own a copy of the liquor code, and there will be one kept on premises as well.
Okay. The follow-up would be, will there be one in your establishment? So yes.
Yes, ma'am.
You want to go through all of them? I can do all of them if I need to. Everybody lost theirs. Okay. How many employees do you expect to have?
Initially, we're looking at 10 to 15 employees. We are opening up coming into this slower part of the year, as we all know, due to just, you know, getting the construction and everything ready. So 10 to 15 to begin with.
Okay. And then, how will they be trained on the liquor code and liquor laws?
They will go to the required training classes that are offered by the state. As we had spoke about, there's some upcoming training. I have already attended this class, and I've already started working with some of the approved DOR online live streaming training, which is a lot more readily available. They can take it, they're offered three times a week, every week. So I do plan to have all my staff fully trained and certified before we even open the doors.
Okay. And then, how did you acquire the signatures on the petition?
Footwork mainly. Main Street, walking Main Street, walking some of the houses and developments around Main Street, obviously, also delivering them to different areas of town just so I wasn't isolated to what's down there. Just tried to spread it out as much as I could, but tried to keep it as close to the area of impact that the business would be mostly impacting.
Okay. And then, are you fully aware that you are responsible for the compliance with the Colorado liquor code, and that any violations of this code may be held against you and/or your business and result in suspension and/or revocation of your liquor license?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I got one question with regards to, and I know you guys are going to get your food license, but what are you kind of planning on having as far as food goes? Are you looking at a menu thing, something just quick and easy, hamburgers and stuff?
Well, we will have a full menu. We are obviously going to carry traditional pub-style fare, so we will have meat pies, probably bangers and mash, things of that, as well as what you would expect to get at a pub, you know, a lot of fried foods, things of that nature, burgers, sandwiches, salads. So we do plan on carrying a full menu. The focus will be on, obviously, brew. We are a craft brewery. We do plan on having 32 taps, but we also would like for you to be able to enjoy a good meal while you're there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I have one, and this may be towards Corrie and Tony, but the particular license that they're applying for is a brew pub, which that limits them in terms of, I'm going to say, how their beers, where they get their beer? So they could not sell, they could not resell beer, is that correct? Beer that you buy from a distributor?
I believe they can do both, but I don't have the, they do have to brew their own, but I believe they can also sell beer brewed by others.
Okay, that's correct. We have no request from the public, no other questions from council. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. I'll close the public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
I now need a motion.
I would move that we adopt the liquor license for World's End Brewery Company, LLC.
I'll second that. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call placed.
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez absent. Councilmember Hammack absent. Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith absent. Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay. Any administrator? Well, let's get Dolly back in.
Thank you and good luck.
Thank you. You brought snacks, of course.
Well, I have one cookie left.
Probably one of those Oreos, if it was from the other day. Hoping for further delay. Thank you. So, welcome back, Ms. Gonzalez.
Thank you. Results are?
Do we have any kind of administrator's report?
Just one.
Okay.
Want to thank Jerry for stepping into the breach as a city clerk, which will continue to help us out. But as you well know, we advertised, we received 48 applicants, narrowed down to four individuals for an interview. I want to thank Councilmember Meisner, Councilmember Gonzalez for serving on that committee along with senior staff and Jerry. And from that, we've determined that the best candidate going forward is Cindy Foster Owens. Cindy has the experience, the education, and really the personal attributes we were seeking in that you really have to be extremely organized, you have to have a great attention to detail, strong records management background, which she has from the police department, public information, and truly outstanding both verbal and written skill sets. So we're very pleased. Cindy is currently with the police department, so that's great. Someone internal to the city, has some knowledge of the city organization. But she also taught for 16 years, which is unique, at the high school and the community college level. So I think if she can teach rowdy kids, I think she can handle a rowdy city council. She also has a master's degree in education, so hopefully that should come in handy. And then, interestingly enough, she also spent six years in Antarctica supporting various research groups from the National Science Foundation. So as she mentioned in the interview, probably the most outrageous thing she'd ever done was a polar plunge, and I told her that's probably no worse than a city council meeting. So I think she's well-prepared. She will start on August the 13th, but we'll go through a mentoring and training process with her. We're not going to throw her into the deep end. Jerry, thankfully, will continue to mentor and train up, and so I think she'll probably be able to get the reins completely turned over to her by early winter. So we're looking forward to Cindy coming aboard, and we want to thank the chief of police for losing a very good employee, and he'll have to go find another one. But it's in the interest of this organization.
I just have a question that I didn't think of. Jerry, are you going to work full-time while she's being trained, or is it just part-time? Part-time? Okay.
So it's a perfect situation where basically Jerry's going to be the training wheels on her bike.
We appreciate you sticking around and doing that.
And she'll basically be getting a master's degree in being a city clerk firsthand by Jerry. It's kind of the old-school way of how law was taught, right?
I'm not that old, Tony. I couldn't tell you.
I was referring to the heir of Abe Lincoln. They didn't go to law school. They were taught by fellow lawyers. So we're going to go old-school as far as the training and development. I think it's going to be a win-win. But clearly, Cindy has great intellectual capacity and experience. I think we'll catch on quickly, but it's a big job with a lot of intricacies and moving parts, and so we have the luxury of getting the proper training and experience under her belt before she takes over completely. So we're thrilled.
And then, let me just clarify that Tony mentioned training. That's not to suggest that she would not have the certifications that are necessary.
Yeah.
It's just the process that we're going to go through. We're going to utilize Jerry's skills and abilities, which he's got tons of experience in that area. Anything else?
That's it.
New old-school.
She's proud of being old-school.
If there's nothing else, I'd like to adjourn this meeting for July 16 in honor of Mr. Hank Holloway. Thank you.